Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Colonial School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on August 22nd for approximately forty-five minutes regarding a legal matter and personnel issues. We also met tonight prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, special education contracts and placements, and assessment appeals. I'd like to make a motion, have someone make a motion, please, for the approval of minutes of the July 16th, 2022 board meeting. Chris, is there a second? Rick, any questions or comments about the minutes? All in favor? Great, thank you. I'd like a motion to approve all the financial reports, items 4B through 4M for June, July of 2022. I could have a motion. Kathy, is there a second, please? Jamina, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Could I have a motion to approve the treasurer's reports for July and, I'm sorry, June and July of 2022? Thank you. Sharon, is there a second? Beth, any questions, comments? All in favor? All right, great, thank you. Superintendent's update. Dr. Christian.
We are eagerly awaiting the return of our students on September 6th. All of our tonight, the board has a lengthy personnel agenda that will hopefully be approved. All teaching positions have been filled, and we know there are some challenges out there in some other school districts in filling those positions. We have published our schedules to our families at the elementary and secondary level. All the bus routes have been developed. First Student is also working on attaining additional sub drivers. We know it's been well-publicized, trying to get drivers has been a challenge, but we have all routes covered presently, and hopefully we'll have more subs in place. This past Monday night, we went through our COVID-19 protocols that we'll be following, and on the agenda this evening, the board will be hopefully approving the health and safety plan, and that is to approach and create as close to normal a schedule for our students and faculty as we have in pre-pandemic conditions. We certainly recognize that COVID is still out there, and there will be cases, but we will be reducing contact tracing, notifications, and the like. We will provide testing as needed, as long as tests are available for students and families who have symptomatic children who give permission to be tested. But really, the goal is to get back to as normal a practice as possible. Masking is optional for families. We respect that choice. We're looking forward to continuing the high-quality educational opportunities that we offer here in Colonial. That concludes my comments.
And now is the time for public comments on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that has any comments in the audience? Mr. Bowley, anything?
None, none at this time.
Okay, back to you, Dr. Christian, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Motion to approve the personnel report and extra-duty contracts as presented in 8B and 8C. Board action is requested for the attached personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credential employment verification documentation and state mandated requirements.
Is there a second? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Sure. Motion to approve the board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 308, employment contract board resolution. Policy 309, assignment and transfer. Policy 601, fiscal objectives, and Policy 605, tax levy.
Is there a second to Chris's motion? Sharon, any questions or comments on any of these policies? All in favor? Great, thank you. Jamina, you have a lot to do tonight.
Yes. Motion to approve the educational service contracts outlined in the agenda as listed: Valley Day School, Explorations, Martin Luther School at Gemma, George Carolla's Memorial School, Building Blocks Behavioral Services, Life Works School, The Overbook School, New Hope Academy, and Carson Valley Children's Aid.
Is there a second? Rick, any questions or comments on these placements? All in favor? Okay.
And also, we have a motion to approve three release and placement agreements due to student confidentiality. These agreements were reviewed in the executive session.
Is there a second to that motion? Beth, any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, Beth?
This is a motion to approve the physician-dentist agreement for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Is there a second, please? Thanks, Kathy. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Colonial School District's 2022-2023 Health and Safety Plan as presented, that the superintendent is hereby granted discretion to implement modifications to the district's 2022-2023 Health and Safety Plan, consistent with the intent of the board as expressed in this motion, and consistent with the directives of jurisdictional authorities. Is there a second? Jamina, thanks. Any questions or comments for Dr. Christian or anyone on this plan?
Just that it can be reviewed at any time, again, during the school year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Transportation contracts, Chris?
Sure. Motion to approve the transportation contracts as outlined below for the 2022-2023 school year. St. Joseph's Prep School for the transportation of Colonial School District students at a rate of $9.70 per student per day for the 2022-2023 school year ending June 30th, 2023, in agreement with Carolyn Eisner to reimburse her mileage at the current IRS rate of .62 and 1/2 cents or the established IRS rate per mile from September 6th, 2022, through August 31st, 2023.
Is there a second? Kathy? Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Will, are you ready? I know you just got here. Food service vendor recommendations.
All right. So, motion to approve the food service vendor recommendations for the 2022-2023 school year as outlined below.
Is there a second? Beth, any questions or comments on these vendor recommendations? All in favor? Beth?
This is a motion to approve a contract with Dr. Angela Curry to provide psychological services at an hourly rate of $85 plus mileage reimbursement at the IRS rate for the 2022-23, 2023-24, and 2024-25 school years.
Is there a second? Sharon, any questions? All in favor? Okay, keep going.
This is a motion to approve the non-bargaining unit rates for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Is there a second? Rick, any questions or comments? Dr. Christian, can you say, explain what non-bargaining unit rates are, just so people know?
Sure. We have employees that are essentially at-will employees, and we approve those, their rates on an annual basis. It's not many employees, but they fill very specific jobs, some of whom do facilities, workforce, and other facets of the district.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a question. Is this able to be revisited throughout the year, or this is set for the entire year? Say Anita Rose, and we need to...
It's annual.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor?
This is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Colonial School District and Colonial Education Association regarding David Caruso as a teacher on special assignment. Is there a second? Chris, any questions or comments? Dr. Christian, you just want to say what this special assignment is?
Certainly. As we've talked about our enrollment over the past few years, we have some growth in the system. For example, 370 seniors graduated this past year, and we have nearly 500 first graders in our, in Colonial. So, we have an assistant principal at Plymouth Elementary, and Ridge Park is now up to almost 550 students. So, this is a position that is a temporary position for one year in anticipation that we may need an assistant principal there. It also provides us an opportunity for a teacher who is in the process of getting his or her administrative cert to try the position out. Sometimes it works out great, and the teacher enjoys moving into the administrative side. Sometimes they would prefer to return to the instructional side. So, we've done this here at Colonial Elementary School. We did it at Plymouth, and we're doing it at Ridge now. You know, succession planning is something that the board has asked us to do for several years. So, just like there's competition for teaching staff, there's certainly competition for administrative staff. So, this is a good opportunity to develop some of our in-house talent.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Chris, any other questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. Is there, if I'm someone who's applying and wants to get my certification, is there a way that I learn about these opportunities, or is there an application process when you move through this? I'm just curious. It's to the...
There is. It's posted throughout, it's posted throughout the district. So, we have multiple applicants from many different buildings, interview process. And then if we have, aside from that, if we have teachers who express interest in becoming administrators, we will sit down with them and talk to them about the path they need to follow and provide leadership opportunities, serving on different committees, curriculum council, all the different things. So, but any type of position like this, we work with CEA, and we make sure everybody's aware of it.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? All in favor? Great, thank you. Will?
Motion to approve and ratify the attached resolution authorizing the district-initiated appeal of the assessed value of the properties identified as undervalued based on 2021 transfer tax reports.
Is there a second? Jamina, any questions, comments? All in favor? Okay, next, Will.
Motion to approve and ratify the attached resolution authorizing the district-initiated appeal of the assessed value for the properties identified as undervalued based on 2022 tax reports.
Is there a second? Rick, any questions? All in favor? Keep going, Will.
Motion to approve the exoneration of 2022 school real estate tax bill as referenced below.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Yeah, Dr. Christian, you want to explain what this is for anybody that's listening?
I'm going to turn that one over to Mr. Sobelaski.
Okay. There was a property on, address is 4046 Butler Pike that was acquired in April by White Marsh Township. They are in the process of getting that property exempted, but the tax bills went out July 1st before they received their exemption. So, they are asking that we exonerate the tax bill that was issued for this year.
And is this standard for us?
Yes. Municipalities and school districts work together. Like, if we would own a property, they would exonerate us. If they owned the property, we'd exonerate them.
All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Last one, Will.
Motion to approve the stipulation to settle the assessment appeal of the properties listed below.
Is there a second? Kathy, any questions, comments? All in favor? Great. Bid recommendation. Chris?
Motion to approve Hirschberg Mechanical Company in the amount of $406,800 to replace the upper roof HVAC air conditioning units at Conshohocken Elementary School. This work is identified in the five-year improvement plan and will be completed over the summer of 2023. Joe, do you mind if I ask you to just mention that...
Wait, do we have a, second? Can I have a second? Jamina, now go, Chris.
Okay, sorry. You had made some decisions a little while ago that end up saving us a lot of money, so I just wanted you to call out.
Thank you. This is the bid, if you recall. We rejected a bid for these units. That was around $780,000 was the low bid. So, we decided to rebid the project. We thought the timing was bad. We thought that, we did not, we were specifying a specific piece of equipment, too. So, we opened it up to a broader number of vendors, and so now we came in well around budget. So, we're really pleased with these numbers.
And, Joe, just so people know, there's, the air conditioning HVAC units are still working?
They are still working. Everything is back on the roof. The roof is completed, and everything's up and running right now. So...
Don't want to scare any parents or kids at Conshohocken Elementary.
The current units are running there. One of the main reasons is not just their age to replace them, but they're running off of refrigerant that is no longer being produced, and it's very expensive. So, they're using R22 refrigerant. So, not to get into detail, but that's another big reason to replace those units.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Great.
Okay. Motion to approve Cedar Electric in the amount of $98,000 for the wiring work associated with the replacement of the upper roof HVAC air conditioning units at Conshohocken Elementary School. This work is identified in the five-year improvement plan and will be completed over the summer of 2023.
Is there a second? Thank you, Sharon. Any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Solicitor's report.
I have no report, and I'm having difficulties with my controls here.
Committee reports. Community relations, student life. Kathy?
We, we don't have the minutes yet because we just had the meeting this Monday, but we did discuss at our last meeting the safety, the health and safety plan. We went into that in detail. We also discussed, it wasn't that many days ago, we had a very, thank you, we had a very in-depth presentation from our security team on different ways that the district is as prepared as possible for any potential harmful things that could happen at our schools. We hired the new three security personnel. So, every one of our buildings will have a school resource officer every day. They are dressed in plain clothes. Well, you know, their PW or Colonial shirt, and with smiles on their faces, and they are to become familiar with our student body and with our staff, and provide that, you know, friendly face and feeling of security upon arrival. So, that was a really great report that I appreciated, and I think we all really appreciated hearing the details. And that was really the gist of it.
Thank you. Curriculum, Jamina?
No report.
Facilities, Chris?
Sure. The paving is continuing at Colonial Middle School, and the teacher's lot will be ready for the first day, being September 6th. The bus lot will not be complete then, but we're working diligently for that to be done by the end of September, and we have an alternate plan in the meantime, and we're working to improve that date every day for that. And I want to thank the custodial and turf management department for, and the maintenance department for getting everything ready for the beginning of the school year. They've been very busy this summer, very productive with different projects and things that are, have been going on. So, it's easily seen when you walk by the schools, or if you go into the schools, you can see how exciting everything is, that it's all nice, clean, and polished, and ready to go. So, thanks to you and your guys, Joe, and gals. Sorry.
Thank you, and thank the staff.
Great, thank you. Finance, Will?
I don't have a report right now.
Thank you. HR, Beth?
I just want to thank our HR department and our administrators. They were very busy based on our personnel report, hiring and getting top-notch candidates into our schools. And very proud that we are fully staffed and ready to start the school year, and also just good luck. And I think everybody's excited to get the year started. So, thank you to all our administrators and teachers.
Great, thank you. Tech school, Chris?
Yeah. Actually, it's been quite amazing things happening at the tech school over the last few years especially, but last year, they had 780 students attending from the three sending school districts and then some other districts. But this year, their enrollment is at 1,069. So, that's a 37% increase between last year and this year, which is, not only is that amazing, but since 2019, they've had a 93% increase in enrollment, which just goes to show how fantastic those programs are, how needed they are in the community, and how the students are responding to the things that are being offered there, and all of the certifications. That's one of the things that has increased over the years, too. The amount of certifications that these students can get prior to graduation is just amazing, and as to how ready they will be in the workforce come graduation day. So, right out of the door, and it shows, and how popular it's becoming. So, they are really starting to burst at the seams. So, that's my report.
Which is great news. All right, thank you, Chris. Any municipal or community liaisons have any report? Sharon?
You know, I always have one from Conshohocken. So, the Fun Fest is returning again to Fayette Street on September 17th from 12 to 8. So, we welcome you to Conshohocken on that day.
For the Education Foundation, I guess I can add for that, that there are tickets on sale now for a special event for the foundation for the Philadelphia Union on Saturday. Anybody help me here?
The 30th of September, is that right?
I don't know, but I guess we can look it up. I should know that, and I don't off the top of my head. The 26th, I'm thinking, well, it must be this. Yeah. I think it's, it's the, I think it's the 24th, but I'm not sure. It's, should be on the school district website.
It is.
Under the foundation. So, please check it out. It's a great cause, and should be a fun event.
It's the 24th.
24th, great, thank you. Pardon me? Oh, okay. Good report. Thank you. Rick?
New fiscal year budget features an increase in spending for education and educational adjacent programs. Always a good thing. School lunch supplemental funding has expired and was not renewed. So, we're back to pre-pandemic kids' lunch.
Whoops, I'm sorry. Public comments of a general nature.
Please state your full name and place of residence, please.
Sure. Claudia Ng, Plymouth Meeting. Hi. Just a quick question. I didn't see on the health and safety plan regarding the assignment of seats on the busing. Are we going to be enforcing that this year, and also during lunchtime?
No, we're not.
Okay. Great. My daughter's going to be really excited. All right. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
Yes?
Please state your full name and place of residence, please.
Andrew Goldwater, and I live in Lafayette Hill. I'm probably a little older than most people that come to this meeting. I had two sons that graduated and went through the system. The youngest graduated 19 years ago. So, I think probably most of the teachers are gone or retired from that.
Todd?
Yeah.
Yes, I see. I have kids that old too, so.
Todd's my son. And he's... The reason I'm here is I need some information. I'm not here to criticize anybody because you did a wonderful job with both of my sons. But I'm a little bit, I guess, confused, and maybe somebody can, and this may be repetitive, but I just don't understand it. The American Rescue Plan, which most of you know, generated $122 billion for the Education Department, and subsequently that was distributed. But in addition to that, some other government agencies also contributed. I don't know how much money... Oh, it was a buck, okay. I don't know how much money Colonial got, and where it was spent. Now, this may have come from some document that was sent out to us. I've lived in the same address for 42 years, so I didn't see it. So, if someone can explain or give me an idea of what went down, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. First off, Mrs. Lester, we'll get your contact information, and we can give you details...
It was printed out as to what, what came in and what went out.
So, we can explain to you. We've discussed it numerous times.
Okay. I'll bet you have.
It's okay, but we'll get your contact information and answer all your questions. I can give you an overview presently, but if you have more detailed questions, that's why we'll get your contact.
I have a lot of detailed questions.
No problem.
I happen to be in the finance business.
Sure. Dave can give you a call, go through everything. We had, there were three separate, three separate fundings. We're in the middle of ESRS number three. I can tell you, when the pandemic originally hit, the majority of it was used for technology so that we could provide remote learning for our students, one-time purchases. We tried to avoid using it for personnel because that's a recurring cost, as I'm sure you know. We also used it when we returned to school for protective equipment, sanitizer, wipes, masks, a variety of things. We used it for additional staffing on a temporary basis if we had staff that were out due to COVID for extended periods of time so that we could continue to provide continuity of education. So, there are very specific categories where we were permitted to use those funds and others where we were not. So, we can certainly get your information and go through all of that and answer your questions.
I appreciate that.
Certainly.
So, I give you my contact information, and you and I talk. Fine, I don't want to waste anybody, excuse me, I don't want to waste anybody's time. You guys did a great job. I don't get, you probably don't hear that much about that from people. You obviously know my younger son. My older son also went through the system, and he's a dentist. So, I did okay with my kids and the education.
You did okay. Now they can support you. It's what I tell my, it's what I tell my children.
The deal was this, you never can come back to me for money. I paid for your education, and you never can come back. I was a little upset that they don't qualify for the $10,000 in student loans, but they don't care.
Well, we appreciate your coming out, and if you have questions, you can come to any meeting or...
I have a lot. I don't want to waste everybody's time.
No, I mean, in the future, certainly email, you can email them, or you can come to a meeting again and sit through a meeting, whatever you want, whichever way you want to handle it.
This is the only second, this is the second school board meeting in a lot of years. And I, there is a reason I came to the first one, which was ridiculous, but it was a, it was a good enough reason, and it got, my, my point was made. So, you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
And I'm sure you guys don't hear that, that often, people coming and screaming and yelling.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Franz?
Please state your full name and place of residence, please.
Yeah, Robert Franz, Plymouth Meeting. I think it was last time or the time before I asked if they had looked at the impact of all those new apartments along the riverfront in Conshohocken as far as the number of students going to Colonial School District. And subsequently, they put a website up there, and they're running places out, and I looked at the website to see rents and amenities and how they were pitching those apartments. And as a person that bikes the trails, I've often been out the Chester Valley Trail to Exton, and over the last few years, there's been a massive apartment complex built there called Ashbridge. And I happened to look up those places, and it looks almost the same type of pitch. So, if you would contact the Exton School District or whatever one does that and asks what kind of an impact it had on their district, you're probably going to get a very close answer to what you can expect from those units there at Matson Mills. And no, I'm not playing to move. You're not getting rid of me. I'm sorry. The other interesting thing was I noticed in the last little magazine that you sent out that the Colonial Education Foundation got some matching gifts, and I found that very fascinating because I worked for one of those companies before I retired. And at that time, they made it very clear, they would match private school donations, but never would match a public school donation. And I guess that's because those that made the rules all went to private schools and academies. But now it appears that they have expanded that and offer places like Colonial Education thing, which I think is wonderful. Of course, as a retiree, they cut us off, so I can't do it. The other thing is I happened to pass by one of the roads by the Colonial Middle School and noticed that very sharp-looking building. What was the approximate cost now that it's all done or pretty much done? Do you have that?
Building was $79.9 million. And I can tell you, Happer-Horsham is building, they brought the brick ground on a similar building, maybe 10,000 more square feet, and the approximate budget is about 130 to 140 million dollars.
Well, I mean, I appreciate Colonial's a little tight-fisted.
But three years earlier, North Hampton built one for 60 million. So, we were, we were, we were in the middle, but the growth came when it came.
And the other, how many times has Colonial Elementary School been re-roofed? It seems like, I've been, you know, here 37 years, and it seems like it's been re-roofed every five, 10 years.
Re-roofed.
Or, you know, done. I'm just, just seems excessive. I mean, mine's only been done once, and I still have quite a few years on the work.
It's been done once in my time, and it's the front T part here. So, when I came to the district, the first rain, three weeks after I arrived, we had garbage cans and, and, you know, slippery-wet wet signs out all over, so we investigated right away. So, the front, the front part portion was taken. But Joe can, we can certainly look up that information and give you a call.
The other interesting thing was I've been having fun on Yahoo website on people that post that think public education teachers are overpaid, and they can't teach, and they don't teach anything. And I've had some fun sparring with some of those people, and I dwell upon my experience and my knowledge here of the Colonial School District of how public education can be done properly, and quality teachers can be hired and teach and get the results and not spend outrageously. And it's been fun, some of the comments I got back, some I could never discuss here, and some that probably have been censored and I've never seen. But I think Colonial does a good job of being a steward of our taxes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Franz.
Thank you.
Board comments?
Just one comment. We talked about it Monday night, and we only have a few members of the public here, but obviously we're being recorded. During the pandemic, we were available on YouTube, on Zoom, you know, we post our videos, we post our audio. There's been no doubt that sometimes with Zoom, we've had, had some difficulties. We also allow folks to call in, or, excuse me, email in via the public comment. So, you know, we're trying to get back to closest normal as possible. The board has always welcomed attendees to its meetings. We recognize students on a monthly basis for their accomplishments. So, we talked about it Monday night. Our recommendation is we'll still broadcast on CITV, still use YouTube, but we really would prefer to have in-person, in-person meetings with in-person attendees and reduce the reliance on Zoom. I said during the presentation of the proposed health and safety plan that was approved tonight, we're not completely closing the door on Zoom or whether it's Microsoft Teams. You know, if we get to December or January and we're in a situation that there are just so many cases and we need to rely on a dual platform to deliver instruction, we will. If we need to do that as a, if the board needs to do that, you certainly may, but I think we've been very accessible throughout the process. We're just trying to get every facet of the district back to as close as normal as possible in pre-pandemic conditions. So, if the board is interested in pursuing that, we'll make, certainly make sure that it's, we...